There you go.
There you go, great. Hello, everybody. Tonight is a select board meeting. It's the 15th of July, and this meeting is being recorded. Is it also going out live?
No.
Probably not. Okay, just recorded. Then we'll start with the pledge allegiance. So there, little flag over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is also a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, which will have a quarter by the time we get to the finance business. So we'll go ahead and start with, let's see.
If you want to do the...
Appointment?
Well, if you want to do the resign.
Oh, right, right. There'll be signings, so, right. So apparently there was a problem with the signature page for the 111 Glendale Road conservation restrictions, so we have a new signature page, and so we already voted in favor of the conservation restrictions, so we just need to sign the signature page.
Sign above your name, pass it along.
That's a pretty hefty.
Yes.
Here is Chair.
Yes, because...
So it's a retro?
Yeah, this is as of June 25th, when we originally signed.
They don't want it coming back to us, that's all.
No.
Yeah, right.
That's why I didn't take any chances that I filled in the date it was previously signed.
Okay. It will go ahead to be one appointment. Tom Sears, ZBA, alternative member, term to expire June 30th, 2022. This is a new appointment?
That's a reappointment.
Reappointment, okay.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't put that in there.
Okay, reappointment, so we don't need any paperwork on that. Is everyone good with their three appointments?
I move to reappoint Tom Sears as the alternative to ZBA.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
There are no hearings, and there are no presentations. The report, would someone like to start a meeting since last Tuesday?
Yes. The Senate, I'm sorry. The Biden Law Committee met last Wednesday, and I can't report specifics, but we are moving along and we're getting close to having, having gone through the entire document at least, coming up with new sections, new language. I still don't expect it much, to go into town much before spring, but we are making progress. But it's an honor's job, and, you know, the situation in asking for additional, an additional member was really to get more hands on deck, because it's an overwhelming task.
Did the committee vote in favor of that?
Yes, the committee voted in favor.
Okay.
To include specifically Chris, and I believe we said we were open to adding other people if they were willing to come on board and work. But at least, at least Chris for now.
Okay, so Chris, you're going to fill out a form for Ed, or is it more of a liaison than the select board?
I was appointed, so, I mean, I was on the committee prior to my being on the select board, so I'm not necessarily the liaison, and Chris could be.
Yeah, it should be an appointment, and I'll put that back on the next agenda so we can update that.
Is that a...
Whether it's, I still have things that are...
Right, right.
Whether it's an ad hoc committee or a regular committee, that's one of the pieces we can fill in and go out of the blank.
Ed brought up some literature from the past where it was referred to as ad hoc at one point, and a standing committee another point, and so that was not really clear, but there was a request to have additional member, and I had encouraged, like, go back to the committee and vote in favor of that, and then officially appoint Chris or anybody else for that matter that expressed an interest.
We did talk about the fact that, you know, you would prefer to have an odd rather than an even number of members, and this would make us even, so the thought was that since by default I'm the chair, I mean that word, by default, been through several people over the course of these last couple of years, that maybe how we would get around that would be I would only vote in the instance of the time.
I thought the other consideration was to have Lucy VA or the Town Clerk VA permanent member.
Which would allow her to vote, so yeah, would, if you add...
Which would still be even number, yeah.
Yeah, you'd have six, so you could have a three-three.
Well, if it's not going to be a liaison, I would just request that, for purpose of a paper trail, you fill out the form that says you're interested in being on the committee, and then we'll put on the Jennifer next time.
Okay, great.
Good, thank you. Any other meetings from last week?
Actually, I did attend the committee presentation committee meeting last week, and discussion was basically around proposals that they might consider, and they had very few. There was only one that they had in front of them at the time of the meeting, and then the discussion kind of evolved into how do they do better outreach to let people know that money is available in the various categories, not just the affordable housing, but in all the categories, and letting people know where the application is, and how to fill it out, and, you know, when and how to apply kind of thing. So there was some further discussion about doing more outreach, updating some things on the website, as well as, I think Randall was talking about putting together some photos that had been done of various projects in the past, to try and get those on the website to encourage people to take a look at what's possible, because I think, you know, just for lack of information, people don't even really realize what might be possible to do, and so that was really the focus of the conversation.
Do you have any remember what the project was that was brought before?
It was a, something for the school, for Nora's school. It was the...
Scoreboard for the softball.
Scoreboard, yeah, scoreboard for the softball.
Scoreboard.
For the softball.
For the softball.
Because there's two permanent ones at Conant, one silver and one...
So that's out of the recreational portion.
We ended up kicking it out for now, because the quote was two years old, and so we said we've got to get a refresh, something fresh, and it was over two years old, so.
Was it presented by SYAA or the school?
It was probably done by Don Spear, who was head of the softball for SYAA.
Okay, okay.
And one other thing that I have seen, none of the communities, none of which I've ever been involved within my own communities, but I have seen some communities actually do some small signage when projects are going on, just to call people's attention to it. This project is being done with CPC funding.
Yeah, that's a good idea, a really good idea.
In Northampton, I go by it every day, but I mean to say that they have a big banner. I don't know what they're doing with that house, looks like they're deconstructing it, but it's clear where the funds are.
Yes, I think it's a store, and it says, "Another project funded by CPC."
Yeah, and that's a banner that, at least in my opinion, is that they transport the different...
I think that's a very good idea.
That's a good idea.
When they did Conant Park and they redid the field and put the scoreboard in, there was a big sign there.
But was it like a sign that they threw away afterwards?
Well, I think it was...
Oh, there you are.
Excuse me, and they're in my entryway. We have final signs, I've got a couple in my entryway, we just need projects for the law.
Didn't see it there, sorry.
They did that, and they did a big deal, and, you know, as the opening day for baseball and softball, they went through all projects.
I think that's a great idea.
So, Virginia, you say it's a great idea, but you had it already?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
And I would feel what we're doing around here, most of the time.
I went to an open space review committee meeting last Thursday night, and just so people know, there are maps here, there are three of them, that are going to be put up on the wall here, and they're maps that were paid for by the Neighborhood Outreach Grant, it was a $10,700 grant, but we had three programs, and so anyway, they were framed, and they're going to be put up here, and so that MPI or Open Space, or where Concom can refer to those maps.
And they're pretty much in the places where they will be, except they will be higher.
Okay, good.
It'll be accessible view.
Well...
Because, I mean, it's really, you have to get, I mean, the print is...
They're going to be, they're going to be above the filing cabinet height.
I'll be on the same...
I'll have to stand on the chair.
I'll have to put a couple students in the class.
The other thing was Jennifer Day came to the meeting, because when Glendale was the discussion about purchasing that, some people made donations to Kestrel in the name of Southampton, and so we had a presentation a while back as to whether or not, what would it involve for Kestrel to hold money for us as a gift fund, and so we invited Jennifer Day to come and discuss master of law relative to gift fund for land purchases, trail maintenance, that sort of thing, and so she came to the meeting and discussed what the advantages and disadvantages of having it in the town would be, and then August 22nd, Kestrel, or whatever date in August, they can come, they're going to come back, and Kestrel's going to talk about what would be the advantages, disadvantages of having it through a fund such as Kestrel. But right now, there's about $1,000 in Kestrel and Southampton's name, without them really knowing what to do with it, and they haven't charged an administrative fee. But Vicki, I wanted to ask you while you're here, there's about eight or nine gift funds in this town, right?
Uh huh.
And one of them says Concom...
Maintenance Trail.
Maintenance Trail.
That was a donation by a resident specifically for Maintenance Trail.
And so a bank account, or a fund is set up, or a line item on the budget?
It's just a line item, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And the account name that we specifically, because in the letter that they said, that they nailed in with their check, they wanted it only to be for trail maintenance.
Yeah, was that like in the last couple of years, or...
That was two years ago, I think it was two years ago.
Okay, so the, so the account sort of already exists then, right?
Yeah, I mean, you can make up any gift account you want for any particular, you know, department, and it can be used at their discretion unless they specifically say, like, there's one for AED, for the police department, and only those receipts from that go into that, you know, particular...
Right, so you wouldn't necessarily have to recreate anything, it's already, it's just a fund in the town.
So those deposits could go into that?
The only thing that came up out of the meeting with Jen was that one advantage, or disadvantage, rather, in some people's eyes, would be that you can't do an anonymous gift to this town, everything's public knowledge, correct? That was the one thing that came out as possibly a disadvantage.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, this particular, the money that's in there for Concom, it wasn't publicized of who gave the donation, if someone, public records request asks for that information, you certainly have to give it to them, but it's not publicized that this person gave this much money or anything of the sorts, because they wanted to kind of remain anonymous, so.
So, and it's on the books, so it's not necessarily generating interest, right?
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
It's not a trust fund.
Right.
So, a question again, so it's a line item, that what's in there now is restricted by donate, by the person donating. If more money just rolls into the line item, since it's a line item in the budget, can somebody grab that budget by end during the process if it doesn't say specifically that it's being held for this?
It can only be used, so like, for instance, if you set up another account for, you know, Glendale, and it's going to be under the responsibility of the conservation, they're the only ones who can spend that money. And if it wants, and if it's designated to be spent for whatever, for that land, then that's, you know, that's kind of, unless they specifically say, "I want to only use it for this, this, and this."
So it's controlled by Concom, which is, I know Marla had a question on that.
Yeah, if that's, yeah, it would be under their jurisdiction, and no one could spend out of there, but then...
There's no administrative fees, like...
Right, right. I think the only downside that we saw about having it in town was some people would not choose to, well, may not trust, you know, management to lose the money, but also the anonymity of it, and some people might not want that, would want to remain anonymous.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're having Kestrel come in August and talk about what that would look like, but they came before, and they talked about this administrative fee, they haven't exactly done this before for municipalities, so they were kind of, you know, thinking about it as they were going along, so, let's say if somebody made a more significant donation into this account, you know, five or $10,000, at what point would it be put into an interest-bearing account?
I had, I talked with Jen, I'm not sure, you know, what would happen would be that you put that money into the trust fund, and you can only spend the interest.
Yeah, right.
But if it's a line...
Unless the committee decides to spend the interest.
No, if you put it in a trust fund to get interest, it would have to be, that principal amount could never be spent, and you could only spend the interest.
Why is that?
Why?
If you put it...
Because it's a trust fund.
Because it's a trust fund.
If the trust could be set up...
All other interest has to go to the general fund unless there are statutes that specifically say that you can keep the interest, like CPA keeps their own interest, water, and, you know, the enterprise funds keep their own interest, but everything else gets put to the general fund. So if you were to put into an interest-bearing account, it would, that interest would come to the general fund.
Okay, well, that's okay, but the money could be spent if the Concom decided to spend it on something, that would be a restriction on that, but the interest, well, that's fine, I just didn't want it sitting there not generating interest.
That's a question.
You did it that way correctly, but if you put it into a trust fund, then you couldn't touch the principal, and all the interest would be...
Okay, well, that's helpful to know. Okay, well, I think at some point, and I don't know if it's our decision to make, or most likely it's Concom's, not Open Space, but there is money sitting at Kestrel that will either discuss having an account there, or more likely, I think, have it be put into the existing gift fund.
What about a revolving fund? Is that better to use?
They already have one, they have one that was set up.
They have one that's specifically for their department, which is when they collect fees.
They be who?
The Concom.
And all the departments, too.
You said department, the Concom's not really a department.
No, but it's a committee or a commission and whatnot, so they have that money in there, you know, for collection of fees, so they can pay for their administrative costs.
Right, but could you do a separate revolving fund?
We could, and we'd have to get voted at town meeting, and there'd have to be limits on the amount to be spent. They also recreated one this past May, was for the forest cutting.
Anonymous, could that be anonymous in a revolving fund if somebody made a donation? Just trying to get over that.
I mean, it's anonymous in that you wouldn't publicize it, but if someone asked for those...
So, even a revolving fund?
Yeah, oh yeah.
So, right now, the...
Yeah, they could get a bank check, you just send the bank check, and we would know who it came from.
Chances are, they want to take it off their taxes, so...
You know what I mean, so...
So these gift funds, you don't, they don't have to go to town meeting to approve it, it just, the department or committee gets to decide.
Well, the question is, is it taxed, or will they give it to the municipality?
Well, we're tax deduct, oh, we're tax exempt, so if it's for a specific reason, my guess is yes, but I'm not the tax accountant.
I have the taxes. I do my own taxes, that's, tax accounting is a whole other...
Okay, are there any other select board updates from committees? Okay, then let's hear about heads before.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lucy, appreciate it.
I lost my cover, but I don't know why I keep losing, it's under the table, I'm not loading. Thank you.
Hey Lucy, first, Town Clerk, you're going to be closed the 23rd, and the office is going to be closed the whole time?
Yes.
So that the assistant Town Clerk doesn't...
Assistant resigns, so we don't have one?
Yeah, answer that question. Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you.
All right, just briefly, since the last meeting, Town Clerk, I'll remind you that the Town's Clerk office, Clerk's office will be closed the week of July 23rd, as the Town Clerk will be on vacation, and the assistant has resigned effective this Thursday. Maxwell McFadson is a Boy Scout from Southampton Troop 210, is working on an Eagle Scout project, and is planning on organizing and conducting a 5K run and a one-mile walk to cause awareness and support for the Southampton community covered. This event will be held at the Southampton Congregational Church on Saturday, August 17th, from 9:00 AM to noon. If you would like to have permission to use the Town Hall parking lot if they run out of space at the church, as they also have Weight Watchers meeting in that same timeframe.
Do you think you could merge those two together?
No.
Yeah, if allowed to use the Town Hall parking lot, he will arrange to have a volunteer helping to direct traffic here. There is nothing currently planned for the Town Hall on that day, and the COA also has nothing planned. I also checked with John Workman for the Fire Department, they don't have anything special like training or anything, so it would appear that the Town Hall parking lot will be wide open if you would like to grant that.
Do we need to grant that? It's a public parking spot, place, right? Anybody can park here. They don't need to.
Don't need to, but it's nice to let them officially...
I'm just wondering if liability wise...
Yeah, right.
One more question, who else is going to run the 5K? My next question.
Yeah. Running using my phone, but, yes.
So, do you want me to write back to him, or do you want to? I just wrote back and said, "We'll talk about it."
I can let him know if you're pleased, that's fine. Chief Illingsworth and myself went to Worcester this past Friday morning for a meeting with the Department of Public Utilities and Eversource along with the Town of Deerfield concerning the February 25th windstorm, tree and power line damage, and the non-payment of police details. I thought the meeting went very well and was productive. I appreciate the Department of Public Utilities putting this meeting together and their willingness to mediate the matter. Chief Illingsworth and Chief Pachorek from Deerfield did an excellent job stating our municipal cases. I only had to interject some additional points once or twice. Chris Henry, who is the Chief of Staff at DPW, or DPU, did a good job mediating the meeting, and made sure that Eversource was going to commit to go back to the table with both communities concerning the non-payment of details for additional negotiations. While I may not feel that we may end up with an offer that will cover all of our detailed costs, I believe that Eversource will have to give serious consideration to offering to cover significantly more of those costs than they originally offered. On the DPU side of things, they want us to keep in touch with them, both positively and negatively, on what happens with the negotiations and in the future with other storms. They seem to be committed to try and institute additional training for Eversource, police departments, and for dispatchers, which was a great point that Chief Illingsworth brought up during the meeting. Both municipalities asked DPU to consider additional regulations requiring Eversource to be required to pay details in the case where down wires were not either manned by Eversource personnel or de-energized in a specific amount of time, even during storms. I believe that the point that DPU is trying to get to is that there is some shared responsibility for public safety during and after acts of God, but there is also a point in time that the utility does become responsible. Another point that I would like to make is that during the meeting, Eversource's Director of Electric Field Operations, Darrell Brown, admitted and actually commended Chief Illingsworth on following the established protocol for these events. Old Business, Tom Gawn, Water Superintendent, let me know that the Cook County Road parcel and the Palmeroy Meadow Road parcel have been mowed of the high grass on these two water protection parcels. As you know, we had gotten those emails back a few months ago on the Cook County Road parcel.
Does, did Water have to hire somebody?
Yes, they had a contract for it, yeah, we don't have the equipment, so. And just to let you know, also, the contractor is tentatively scheduled to start the chimney rebuild and the roof replacement at the Conant Park Pavilion this Saturday, July 20th, and will replace the roof the following week, weather permitting. Upcoming select board meetings, July 23rd, and select board meetings for August will be the 6th of October.
Well, it sounds like Chief Illingsworth did a great job. How much money does Eversource owe in police detail?
Originally, I think it was $18,000.
It's 18 and some change, and I'm going by my memory, it's a chief right here, but he's on vacation, he could tell you exactly. My memory is, I believe, that about $3,500 of that is either administrative fee or the fees we charge for cruisers.
And their original offer was something like $16,000 or $18,000?
Well, they, yeah, they said they offered to pay for a couple of details, and one of the points that I interjected at the meeting was, I point-blank told them that I was actually, I appreciated them meeting with us, but I was actually insulted by their offer to pay for just a couple of the details, and that Darrell Brown reached right out after I made the comment, and he said, "I want to apologize for that, and nothing should have ever been said at that meeting about, you know, anything, we want to leave the table open to negotiations. What we want to see and talk about is further detail on, of the information on where those details were, what were the circumstances, what have you, so..."
So that's the next step, is we're going to hear from...
When Chief Illingsworth comes back from vacation, he's going to put together that list, he and I are going to go over it, and we're going to reach out to Eversource to ask for a couple of dates to get back together to go over that information.
And just so everyone knows, I was at that meeting, and Ed and he and I talked afterwards about what our recourse was, and I asked whether or not we should be letting our state rep know our situation, and we all agreed that we should, and so I contacted Lindsay Sabadosa, and I filled her in on the details, and she'll just monitor it, you know, not do anything until such time as we arrive at some hopefully mutually agreeable conclusion with Eversource.
And in fact, her aide has been checking in periodically with the chief and myself, and I owe her an email to let her know how last Friday's meeting went.
Good.
That poses a big issue for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we have to get that, that will hit our free cash, and we won't get it back. So, yeah, I can't tell the Department of Revenue that, "Oh yeah, we're going to collect that money."
Yeah.
You know, they would bill at the end of June, which if you bill like the last three weeks of June, they'll accept the fact that you wouldn't have gotten paid by, within their limits of timeframe, but this was February, and they're not going to let that fly, so...
So, so we pay with free cash, but now when, if they did end up settling a given amount in the middle someplace, what does that money, does it go back into free cash?
Yeah.
Goes back into general?
No, it gets, it gets presented against the deficit that's already there.
It's not that it's paid from free cash.
It's not paid, it just gets taken off. Any deficits that aren't covered by the state statutes of collecting any money, like rent money, it's up between July 1st and September 30th, they just automatically deduct it from what they would have given you for your free cash, because you have to absorb all those deficits.
Got it.
So...
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the 2019 Budget and Expenditures Review. I'm not sure if people want to go over that, the last one that we got was...
Yeah, it's the same as the last, what was the last meeting?
Yeah, it was only the end of June, so nothing's new on it.
No, it's currently, Joyce is in the process of processing, the last cleanup warrant for FY19, so she's in the, in the process of processing those bills, and they will be posted on late Thursday, early Wednesday, late Wednesday, early Thursday, that will be hit the ledger for this year.
So this is the way to look at that?
Yeah, so some of them would have to be held pending approval of these transfers.
Okay, so my other question, on the scheduled proposed budget transfers, I guess we're going to have to wait, but I'd like to see those on the expense report, just to see, because a lot of these departments are doing a great job, so I wonder if this is going to affect it drastically or not. But next time out, we'll have those, right?
Yes, some of these are not going to show up on the expense report because they're currently in the process of being, you know, we currently have these bills from individuals, from the departments.
So they're, they're being transferred?
So they're not going to show up on the expense report, because we haven't posted it or finished processing yet.
Right, but the next time you post it, yeah.
They will, but they're on this page.
Right, okay, I thought you were saying something different.
No, 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 no.
They will eventually end up there.
No, they line up, it seems.
The only other item before we talk about the departmental transfers is the annual report update. So Ed, where is that at? I know it's overdue.
It's overdue, Judy and I are going through that this week to see what we have for reports that we have not received yet. I sent out some, that I knew were missing, I sent out some emails today, and actually had a couple come back. Well, finish that up tomorrow. I'm hoping to have everything back next week, so we can do the final edits on it and get it to the publisher, and even though it'll be late, it'll get published.
Okay, that's going to get, that's going to be high priority.
So then you're going to have to appropriate more money in 20 for two annual reports, you realize?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, then let's talk about the budget transfers.
Most of this is just some cleanup stuff, some of it is, you know, some expenses that kind of had come through that were, you know, a little bit over in some of the departments. The first one on here is admin assistant wages, 12 hours and 49 cents. And Ed was going to take that from his admin expenses. It's not even full hour worth of time on her part, because she gets paid from her $15.92, I think, an hour, something like that.
Like a 92 or 94, yeah.
Postage is... Postage is over a little based on some of the larger, some of the larger mailings that we've had this year, census, the tax bills, you know, there's a little bit more tax bills, there's more postage that goes along with it. Some people do certified mails and all that, so it's $64.32, which I decided to take from the reserve fund. Thank you, Finance Committee. The principal assessor is over $78.82. There were some, you know, meetings that Martha had gone to that was above and beyond that, you know, the hourly people need to get paid for those particular meetings. That equates to maybe three extra hours for her, which isn't a whole lot of time. But she had, there's money in the assessor admin assistant. Treasure collector software support is 31 cents. It was rounded last year without the decimals, and we had to pay the actual bill. And there's some money in her treasure collector wages. Town hall building expenses is short $14.35, some supplies, some last-minute supplies that were...
Yeah, it was one month, one month of WV Mason water cooler rental at $799 and $4, and I think like 80 cents for the batteries, for the remote control, for the hoods and the COA.
Approximately, Ed, right?
Yeah. Which is going to come from admin expenses, there's some money left in there. Gas and electric town hall will be short $5,158.57 due to the last two bills I got for net metering credits.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Why do we have so much money left over in, say, technology, equipment and services? What didn't we do this year that we were planning on doing?
There is going to be an encumbrance for 2,350 bucks, I think.
Yeah, 23, 80 or 95 or something like that.
That will come out of technology services, or is it equipment?
That's equipment.
Equipment, yeah, because it's a switch, right?
Yeah, it's a switch in a rack and stuff.
But you still have this money left over after that even. So what, again, same question, what didn't we buy that? Because that's a lot of money in the budget.
I thought we had a relatively good year as far as having to replace like printers and things like that. And on the service side, well, we did have to use some IT services to straighten out some issues. But there wasn't a lot of extra calls this year.
We didn't need new like computers or anything that everybody used to money for?
Well, that's, we actually, that's the next budget.
Yeah, we budgeted for a couple thousand dollars sitting there.
Right, 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 exactly.
And cut down next year's budget.
Right, and it actually came out of, I think, capital, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know where we are in terms of a service agreement, or if we're going to get a service agreement, but those types of things will come out of those, you know, that account.
And we should have enough this year to do the service agreement, once the new service is in place.
So gas and electric, that, there's money left over in town hall custodial wages, because we didn't hire Dave till partway through the year. I took some money from technology equipment and technology services, leaving enough for that encumbrance of those particular items that I had ordered.
And was it one month or two months worth of net metering credits that we did not receive that cost a little bit of this?
This is, it was one month.
One month, okay.
And I'm still trying to sort that out with them, so if we get that at that, in particular time. But that was like 500 bucks, but, yeah, I'm still doing my analysis, and I'll send you that once I'm done about how much we particularly saved over the course of the year from having the net metering credits. It's not anything to shake stick at, it's probably 8,000 bucks, which is pretty good, but I guess I thought it would be more than that, but, you know, by the way, they talk about solar and how great it is, and you save all this money, and, I mean, 8,000 bucks for all the buildings, not including the school, and including the well, doesn't seem like a whole lot of money, but. Yeah, so what I do is I put together, I have a spreadsheet where I put down how much the credit was and how much the charge was that they charged us. So by building, you can see how much each building saved for this year and how much they charged us. So we, you know, I can send that to you, I put these last two months in there. Another piece of the gap, the electricity would be, I don't know what's going to happen with HCOG and our supplier, so that would be something else to just keep an eye out for, because all of a sudden our bill might decide to erupt, because there's no more contract, which is what happened with NG. We had a great rate, they realized our contract expired, and the next month, our fees, our charges were like down.
And regardless of the fact that we're already locked into a contract, it's not going to...
Yeah, I mean, if they dissolve.
If they dissolve, it's not going to...
Yeah, it won't matter.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, what they've been trying to do is sell off some of their services of some of the other service areas, but we'll let someone pick that one up. I would think that one they might, but there's no guarantee on it, and who might end up being, we don't know at this time.
But just keep that in the back of your brain.
Vicki, do you have any idea like what portion is gas and which portion of this 5,100?
This one is just, this is just electric.
Okay, so it's all just electric?
That's just electric, yeah, it counts as gas and electric, but that's just electric.
Is that a month thing, though?
That's two months' worth of, yeah, charges for the net metering credits. Now, we did get credits, but, yeah, the bills were almost 6,000 bucks between the two of them. But what happens is, is you put it in, and then I take it out after, because they'd send it to me in one big spreadsheet, a total, and so I have to do a journal entry to each individual department to charge something else, so.
Vicki, didn't I understand that you said this was more than just the town hall, though, it was other buildings?
No, this is just the town hall, yeah.
I'm trying to do something to keep that under control.
Police overtime wages, we had done $5,000 last transfer, and we, you know, the chief and I tried to guesstimate how much it would be, you know, for the last, this is for the last week of June, and so this 2,100 bucks is his overtime wages for the last week of June. People had vacations that he had to cover, and one of the officers is at the academy, and so what happens is, is he doesn't like to have two part-time people on at the same time. He has a full-time and a part-time, so if someone's on vacation, he has to fill it with a full-time if a part-time is working, so that's where some of this 2,100 bucks comes in. But he had money in his police education incentive, and if you look at your expense report, he's probably got 50-some-odd thousand bucks left in his police wages. Communications wages is $7,846.28, and that is due to overtime that kind of accumulated throughout the year. There was a dispatcher who broke one ankle and wrecked her other one, so she was in crutches, and she couldn't come in for a couple of months. And so you have to fill those shifts with the full-time people, and that's where the overtime kind of gets accumulated, so. But she is back, and I guess she's doing pretty good, so. But that came from his police wages, $7,46.28. EMT wages from that last week was short $17,338, which is just going to come from his standby. When he did his last round of transfers, he was trying to gauge on how much he might use out of standby and out of wages, and it ended up that he used more out of wages than standby. Fire EMS billing expenses, $735.05. You know, the last time when he spoke, there were those repairs that needed to be done to the building, which were just estimates that he had, and this is the exact bills that he had to pay. So he was a little bit short on those bills on fixing the roof and the soffit and all that stuff that had to get done at the egress door and all that stuff at the fire station. But he has money within his budget from license certification, that didn't get you too much this year. Ambulance billing is short $560.54. You know, the more we do calls, the more we get billed, and normally in the past, now only the past maybe three years, we've had 7,000 bucks, it used to be 8,000 dollars, but we found that we weren't billing that much before we went to the full-time, you know, the full-time for three shifts. And so now we might have to put, you know, some more money in there going forward, knowing that we might be billing out more than, you know, than we had in previous years. But he has that money in his EMT standby. COA director wages is short 56 bucks, which is like two and a half hours, I think. Some activities that kind of went over, you know, she stayed to do those activities, which came from the wage line, which her assistant wasn't here the entire time. So there's money in that to cover that. Group health insurance, you know, I guesstimated on how much, without knowing the exact figure last time, of how much our health insurance would cost us for that last month, and it was short $184.33, which is going to come from...
Numbers don't match, huh?
Yeah.
Part of the other point, and part of the general insurance is going to cover the Medicare and the group health insurance. Because there wasn't enough in insurance, the general insurance to cover the Medicare.
Yeah.
The Medicare is, the town pays 50%, and that, you know, is based on the number of employees and how much people make, and so we were, Jen and I knew we would be a little bit short because it was based on last year, and you can only kind of guesstimate how much you might pay. But that's able to be covered from unemployment and general insurance. So it's within that same category. Road machinery expenses are short $2,944.85. That would be mostly to the repair of the sweeper, street sweeper. We already paid about 13 and some odd thousand dollars, but it went down again, and he had to get that repaired, which will come out of the general highway wages, because he had, someone had left and he hired someone, the mechanic didn't get rehired, and then the labor that got hired is not as expensive as the mechanic, and so he had some savings in that line, not that he doesn't need a mechanic, but. The next one is a big one, school choice tuition comes in on the cherry sheet that we originally get from the governor's budget back in the beginning of the fiscal year, well, it's like May. And so what happens is every month, we get, we get a report from the Department of Revenue that says, "Here's all your money for the month, and here's all your assessments for the month." And this last month, the assessment was more money than what was originally on the original cherry sheet. Because they take the original amount on the cherry sheet and they divide it up by 12 months, because they give you 12 months of the revenue, and they give you 12 months of the assessments. But this last month for June, the assessment was 19,013 bucks. There was probably someone that decided to go to a charter school after they had already done the cherry sheet, because if they don't decide till September, we don't know that.
So they don't adjust it?
They don't adjust it, no. They don't, they only adjust it at the year-end when they send you the assessments.
So you could get more or less?
Could get less, yeah, sometimes there has been less, sometimes there has been more.
Is the school department aware of this? Were they aware of the consequences of an extra 24,000 dollars in the budget or anything? No?
Do they know how it works?
But they don't really get involved in school choice, that comes right from the state.
Okay.
Not school choice, but charter school. I mean, they know someone went to the charter school.
Yeah.
This is school choice. But that includes charter school, right?
But it doesn't include charter, does it?
Charter's not school choice.
No, no.
Oh, you're right, that's school choice, sorry, charter school is off by 28,000 bucks.
So does the school...
So they probably, I have to contact Bobby, they don't have any control over this part, because it comes from the state, but they might have known that kids left, you know, partway through. Because we get $5,000 per kid, or we have to send 5,000 bucks out.
So what does this 24,000 represent then, if it's 5,000 per kid?
Well, so originally, originally the budget per the cherry sheet, which is all that you can put in here, because that's what goes on the tax recap, was $39,171 bucks. That's what the Department of Revenue said, "Hey, this is what you're going to get charged for school choice." But if other kids, that was based on the kids that were already out of the district. If more kids leave the district, then they charge you, you know, we have to pay the other school department 5,000 dollars for kids.
So regardless, it's not prorated, so if a kid leaves in the middle of the school, it's not 25,000?
That's a good question, I don't know, I'd have to ask that question.
I'm going to say this, otherwise it'd be a 5,000 increment.
Yeah, I know. It's not, it's probably not prorated, that would be my guess, but I don't know that.
Why is it around 5,000 dollar increments, and why 39,734 dollars?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
Well, then maybe another money already.
5,000, it's 5,000.
Can we find that out?
Yeah. I have a whole manual, which I read way back when, of how the, what each thing means on the cherry sheet, and I have to refresh my memory from, you know, five or six years ago.
I guess the follow-up question is, if the school doesn't know, they should be keeping track of it, because they need to come up with some funding at the end, and maybe they could say, you know, "Okay, I want to be short, can we take it and save some money here?"
Yeah, well, they should be reconciling.
Well, I do send them, I send them, and they reconcile all these, but that's not one that they reconcile, because they don't get the, they don't get charged the money, we do.
So is it the same amount for 11 months, then the 12th month is where you get the reconciliation?
Yes, sometimes, yep.
So you don't know until the 12th month?
Correct.
Okay.
So a lot of these systems, right.
But if you can find out why it's an odd number, that would be...
I mean, that's four or five children, right?
Four or five.
So they must know, they must know over the course of the year what to expect and...
And kids coming and going, somebody would have to figure out, that's 4/10ths or 2 fifths of this, how much is that?
I mean, this is not just that, they're the ones who charge us that assessment. You know, state, the Department of Education must figure that out, because they're the ones who charge the assessment on our cherry sheet every month.
Information is sent to them simply at school committee?
Of who's here and who's not, correct. But how the calculation is figured out, that's not, I guess I'd have to ask...
So if we had more choice in, the money would have gone directly to us, not to the school committee budget?
That is, that is gone to the school choice line item in the accounts for the school department, and they're the only ones who can use it.
For the revenue, sorry.
Then why are we responsible for the payment when it's, when it's a negative to budget, and yet they... Is that what I'm hearing, like?
Well, technically they are, though, right?
They are, because they're not, except for the veterans.
Well, veterans is the one that's, that's the one I'm referring to.
Yeah, for 4,500 dollars.
But if they didn't have money left over in those accounts, where would it go from?
Yeah, but the vocational is also the town, it's not the school, so that's not exactly the school.
But see, the school choice fits into net school spending, and so does the vocational school. So if you didn't have any money left in vocational tuition, the school would have to come up with some of this, but I, so...
How do you come up with it in the 12th month?
Yeah, right, right.
Saying you're wrong. And the question about being able to...
And so if it's short, and so say there was 39, and they only charge us 20, then do you think the school should get the rest of that money? Or do you think the town should get the rest of that money? Because it works both ways. Like if on our cherry sheet, they said, "We're going to charge you 39 grand," but then we only got billed for 20, there's 19 grand that's left over, that...
But any money in the school budget would come back to us anyways.
The school doesn't necessarily get unless you transfer it to the school, because it needs some kind of school spending.
But any excess comes back to us anyways, at the end of the year. I mean, if the school has extra money, it's coming back to us, goes back into the budget, right?
It does, but they don't have a lot of money actually.
Well, they do here, I mean, vocational and local school transportation, that was...
Yeah, the transportation will come back to the town, but the vocation tuition, if it doesn't get all spent, that number is calculated for net school spending, so most of that has to get transferred to the school, so we can meet that net school spending.
Right, but they didn't spend, you were saying, at least 13,000 of that, right?
Yeah.
Well, and how can we also take the veterans' benefits to cover a school item?
Cause at the end of the year, you can transfer amongst any departments to any department. I try to stay within those same groups. The one I had set, but that was just one that had some extra money, and I could've taken it from police, but I didn't.
So this is our, this is our, like, 25% of the benefit, the town's portion.
Say that again, which one?
I believe the benefits, veterans' benefits are divided, the state or federal government gives us 75%.
We get that the next, we get the year after, correct.
So this would've been, this is out of our 25% that we would have allocated.
No, it's only what you spent, not what you appropriated. It's only in what you spent.
So this was left in the budget?
Left in the budget, yeah.
Yes.
So it's based on whatever...
Got some drop, drop off.
Yeah, whatever Jerry submitted to the state, that's how they calculate that piece. So that mostly is coming from vocation tuition, the local school bus transportation, I did take some from veterans' benefits, um, then vocational transportation is off $223.20.
Can I just mention that we're not denying veterans their benefits?
No.
That their veteran benefits accept, um, per veteran, so I just wanted to make that clear, cause this happened once before, and there were some people that were unhappy about that, but it's not like we're...
No, we budget based on, we budget based on what the anticipation is of the benefits, and we can only gauge it from the prior year, so if you have someone drop off, or if someone had on, or which not...
They move or they pass away.
Yeah, and so then there's money left in the budget, or we have to appropriate extra money in the budget.
But they get it, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, we're not denying them anything, it's something that we did pay out.
So, does it matter that there's a $10 difference, 223 and 233?
Well, that's if the next two are grouped together.
Okay.
I believe.
Under P.
Yeah, I don't know, numbers, the numbers don't add up. Oh, yeah.
I guess it matters. Well, listen, it was rolled into something else, that's all I'm saying. If it is, if it is.
Yeah.
I mean, the good news is that, for me, looking at this, is that most of the over expenditure is being covered by other line items within the same department.
Yeah.
So that's, that's good. It's not a big deal, I just...
Your peni-oth will be a million here and a million and a penny over here, you know?
Well, the total is, the total is...
It's the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll find it.
So library wages was off, um, we, you know, this is kinda the caveat when you have, you know, people have accrued vacation and then they leave during the fiscal year and we have to pay them off the vacation, we don't put that into our budgets.
You know, whether it be a salary person or an expense, uh, wage person, we don't necessarily put that in the budget, cause it's based on, this is, you know, so if you pay someone off their vacation, then you hire someone to take that place, you're kinda double...
Is there anybody that has replacement, um, sort of, um, situation in this building? Is there anybody that is under the, sort of, a replacement thing, where you do budget for a replacement?
No. You know, there have been years when, you know, even Jen's department or my department, you know, we try to budget an extra week or a couple extra hours for when the people worked overtime, and they all got cut, cause they had to be exactly like what they worked. You know, so if Joyce were to leave tomorrow, she's got five weeks vacation, so either I do all her work, or I hire someone and she gets paid her vacation, and then I have to hire someone to do her work, and it's kinda, it's gonna end up potentially going over.
Next one, yeah. I'm re-doing it, just making sure my fingers are right. Are we too bad?
Yep.
We both have that set. So that's a bigger number.
Yeah, so the library wages, one Vicky is also...
Yep.
1459, 163.
It's off by 1664.
1664, right?
Yep, 1664.
That's what I came up with.
This is 10 bucks up here. It's the opposite direction, so there's a net of 1664 that we're off, at least enough to.
quick. It's easier if I do them, so. So library maintenance, Barbara had an extra bill for, um, some work that was done, um, you know, putting all the bushes and whatnot on the outside, that was a little bit more than anticipated. Uh, 17657, but she had money in her library expenses. Basically, I just wanna keep the right expenses in the right line item, so when we go to budget next year, we're not trying to remember.
Right.
We paid it out here, we paid it out there. Winter road expenses, this is the other half of what I didn't cover, um, a couple of budget times ago, because I wasn't sure what Randall was gonna have left in his budget, and I wanted to make sure that if he had left, I wanted to take it from him first before I took it from somebody else. Um, so he had money in his general highway expenses, he had money in his building expenses, he had money left in his admin assistant, and then he had money in his general highway wages. That was to cover these winter road expenses. Interest on short-term debt was the interest for the borrowing that we had to pay for the ambulance, um, and so I took that from the fire department. I talked to John Workman about it and said, you know, "Once you get your building squared away, if there's money left in there, I will take it to cover the interest, cause it was your ambulance that we did buy and Carl the money for." Then the last couple are just, um, you know, a rounding deficit from interest on the pumper tanker, um, interest on peat rock ponds, road loan, you have administrative costs, and every year it's different. So we try to budget based on what we paid last year, and sometimes it comes up a little bit different. Admin fees for processing road loan things, which is kinda weird to list up. Um, I know that's gonna come from, you know, Jen has some, a little bit of money left in her treasury collector expenses. Building inspector salary, highway superintendent, and veterans agent salary are all rounding issues, pennies that we paid for that last, um, salary, and so town admin salary, treasurer clerk, town clerk and fire chief had the opposite effect of the rounding, where they had a little bit of money left over, so I was just netting all those together to, just to make them zero. Um, let me go look at this real quick, I'll be right back.
And I'll tell you the three areas I see that kinda don't balance. The group health and Medicare is, I think, $6.64 unbalanced. The, uh, that library wages and library maintenance compared to the ones on the right are 664.
1664.
1664, yeah. And then there was that other $10 one, which was...
Vocational transportation.
Vocational transportation. So if you look at those three, I think your totals are gonna be fine, but...
They net out.
They net out, yeah.
So I mean, we need a motion for this, right? To accept this?
Yes, you both will, both you and the finance committee.
So I'm willing to make the motion with the changes stipulated in the balance of 6547152 approved.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it. Any more discussion? How about finance?
Finance committee, motion to turn around 6547152. I don't care. Second.
I just wanted to hear it first before we approve it.
All in favor?
Okay, would you like what, all in favor? Yep, with the changes to be made, yeah. Okay, with the changes? All in favor?
Aye. So if I can, this is my, if you and the chairs would just sign the bottom, we have the...
Well, actually, I actually took the time to, I put a couple slots on it, if you want, so...
Okay. You can just sign the bottom, it's just as easy.
The final number can be 6547152.
Yes, that's the total.
They're the same number.
The totals are the same, it's just the internal numbers have to be, yeah.
Yeah, it's just as easy to sign the bottom, which they used to do in the past.
I'm compulsive in some places, this is why...
I've been doing this for seven years, and they just sign the bottom.
I don't mind signing it, yeah.
Sign the bottom.
Here you go, baby.
Any other questions for Vicky, or any other, anything else from finance about the last of these transfers?
Oh, it's not a transfer question.
Did you wanna ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, um, Vicky, I, at our, um, I don't know why, me might be here, but maybe it's the same reason, I don't know, but, um, for the power metal, power metal road land, um, loan, for the CPC is doing, on their last meeting, we're questioning how their annual loan payments are, are made. I believe the, the money comes in quarterly for that, but we just, we were concerned that the money could get spent or let out before your, before the loan payment is made. And how does it, cause we, we've never been down the road before with the CPC giving out a loan.
Correct.
So we wanna make sure that, you know, we're on the same page with, and it's nothing we have to decide tonight to figure out, but just to know if there's a way with other loans that go through other people's budgets, that, how do we, how do we know we didn't spend the money, and not spending the money, totally have to spend it with a loan?
Um, I guess I'd have to determine how much our loan payments are going to be per year, I don't know, I don't know if we decided on the length of it, 10 years?
I think so.
I think that's what we, we're gonna do 10 years. So what happens is that annual town meeting, there's always an article where we do 10%, has to go into the historical, the open space, and the community housing, which is coming from undesigned. Um, I don't transfer any of that undesigned money into, what money's revenue we've collected into the balances until we've pretty much collected them all until the end of the year. So I can set up an account that I can just transfer those monies, because we don't need to vote on it again, I think that's what Stuart said, once we voted it once, we don't have to vote on it again, it's just a given. So I can just transfer those monies from those revenues right into that line item for that, to pay back that loan.
Okay.
So us before we actually transfer the rest of the monies into the undesigned. So if we have 200,000 bucks, 20 goes into community, community housing, 20 goes into open space, 20 goes into...
Undesigned.
Historical and community, um, community housing, and then administrative, which is, I think you've been doing like 75, something like that.
Yeah, always 75.
Um, so that can be part of that transaction that I do in the beginning of the year, is just to make sure I put that in that budget, so that we pay, we'll just pay that out.
But we just have to make sure that if, I mean, it all goes through town meeting anyway, so it should come up, where if we wanna, if, if there's a project, they wanna spend $50,000 on it, and we have a $60,000 loan payment to make...
Well, if I take that 60 grand out of undesigned and put it into a budget line item at the beginning of the year for that loan payment, then it won't show up in the amount in undesigned that we need to, you know, we have money to...
We were wondering if that could happen, that's, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, cause we've never had to do that before here at all, so...
Right, right.
Right, well, Vicky, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Can I ask one question before she goes?
Yep.
You may have asked it last week when I wasn't here, but I'm just going back to the expenses on the education, elementary school, they're like almost half a million dollars under budget. Is there a lot of encumbrances or expenses that got hit against them?
There is, I just got it today from the school, $322,000 worth of payroll encumbrances, which happened, I think, in the year for the five week, five pay period, four pay periods that they're gonna pay out. There is $68,000, almost $69,000 worth of bills that we're currently in process of paying, and they have, that's gonna be...
90% of it, right?
Yeah, and there are some encumbrances that they will forward to me to the end of the year, so...
They didn't hit the warrants for this big old town, I think we got...
It's the one that they're working on now, because the school committee has to, you know, to meet and approve it, and so we just got those bills for this last cleanup warrant, so, um, so if anything comes in that there's no money in someone's budget and they lost a bill, got, you know, mixed up somewhere, and there's no money, they'll have to go to town meeting to get money appropriated. But if there's money in it, then I'll uncover it for the next year. But I have to have an invoice, an order from the company that says, "Hey, you know, you ordered this prior to June 30th." So, um, and you know, what I do at the end of each fiscal year, and I do it periodically through years, I go through all these accounts, not only the general fund, but all, like, the schools, I reconcile with the schools, I reconcile with Virginia, if there's projects that are closed, I go through all the, um, the grants are here to make sure we're gonna get reimbursements, um, you know, revolving funds, make sure we're gonna get our, our grant money within the timeframe that the DOR allows us to, um, you know, then you have capital, which all these capital projects, I always check on to make sure that people aren't gonna spend it for something else, and then I will put them back, put it back into the capital stabilization fund, cause it has to go back to where it was appropriated. Um, and then I reconcile water and transfer station with those two department heads, and then that expendable trust fund, I give Jen a balance so she can move the money around within the fund that they're actually gaining interest from. So anything that gets transferred out, she'll take out of that particular fund that it's in to say there's, you know, that money's not necessarily in there. So I do go through all these periodically through the year, but definitely at the end of the year and check up on all the stuff that doesn't look, that looks kinda funky, if it's negative, or doesn't seem like it's the right balance that I've seen over the past previous years, and just, you know, that's part of my end-of-year process to make sure these are as clean as they possibly can be, so, um, that's kinda how part of that process works, so it's not just the general fund that gets, you know, we look at, I look at all those, so...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back from vacation.
Do you feel like you had one, after one day back?
I was, yeah.
By looking at these numbers, you did. Sorry, Vicki.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, we went to the Grand Canyon, so.
That's great.
Yeah, so, it was, I'm glad we had, I had a few days before today, because I would have been like, half asleep when I was here this morning, although it looked like I was half asleep, but it's hard to balance when, um, you know, you're trying to take what's in the warrant now and add it to what's there to see if there's going to be enough money, and so it's sometimes a little bit of a juggling.
No, I'm always impressed the way it sort of all comes from a similar, you know, account.
Yeah, you try to, I mean, I, that's kind of how I-
She works very hard at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. She's doing a fantastic job.
Good job.
Try. Not fifty-five, no.
None, no, sir.
My kids think they are, but, you know. Don't all kids think they are?
Yes, yep.
So the next thing on the agenda is the marijuana vendors draft host agreement template discussion. So there was a public hearing down at Red Rock with a potential vendor, and last select board meeting we talked about the host agreement that we got from KP Law. We had asked Ed to get a copy of the host agreement for the marijuana dispensary in North Hampton, and also in East Hampton. He forwarded those to us, and so we just wanted to have a discussion about the current host agreements. So I have a question, but I wanted to open it up first to other people to see if they had questions about the host agreements that we saw.
Excuse me one second. I think what we're going to do is, we're going to step out, continue what we need to continue.
Okay.
Did you want to hear about this? It's a revenue, new revenue source.
Oh, okay, I didn't know where you were going.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, then we'd use some PCF, so this would be a good thing to have you be part of. Actually, what we're discussing is our host agreement with the potential vendor and how it compares to the East Hampton and North Hampton-
Okay.
Host agreements.
Okay.
Right. So right now, North Hampton and East Hampton have 3% listed as their-
Community impact.
Community impact. And then there's an additional fee that town's going to assess, and sometimes it's for a certain designated number of years, and so ours sort of somewhat loosely said $20,000, East Hampton and North Hampton says 10. What I wasn't clear about is, they also talked about a fee to be able to provide education on like, substance use, and, you know, to identify a particular recipient of this particular money. Question I had was, is this above and beyond 10 or 20,000, above and beyond the 3% local impact?
It's above and beyond the 3% community impact fee.
But it's part of the 10,000 fee to assess-
But it's part, right, that's, what they're doing in those particular cases is they're kind of identifying the areas that that X amount of said dollars is going, correct.
So the host agreement says, you know, that the, there'd be a local tax assessed, 3% is pretty much the standard amongst all three of the host agreements. The other one was identifying a recipient, it might be an organization, it might be a school system, it might be whoever that would carry out education. Another part of it is local employees, some of them specify that you would hire local people, and the, the big difference was the, um, the assessment of the fee of, like, look at the East Hampton, it says $10,000, which I think it is for five years.
Yes.
And then to be renewed based on a discussion with the vendor.
So one quick question, the, the 3% is, is of what, of the sales?
Sales, yeah, with a quarterly payment.
Gross sales?
Quarterly payment.
Right.
And you've got, at least with a recreational, and I'm going to call it retail outlet, you've got the 3% local option tax, which we also, we already approved as part of our bylaws. That's separate. The 3% community impact fee is separate from that 3%, it's totally different.
So 6% total.
So 6% total. If it was a medical marijuana facility, you would not be receiving the 3% global tax, because medical, they don't, they don't tax.
And that tax goes into just to the general fund?
Correct.
On these fees, we're seeing a lot of these vendors being bought up and sold all over the place. When they get bought or sold to a new quote-unquote vendor, do we recharge them all over again, or is it just a transfer?
They did, it's, it's a transfer. They, they assume the liability or the particulars of that particular host agreement.
Just a thought for you, about if they do get sold or whatever, why not turn around and have them jump, jump back through the hoop again?
Probably wouldn't be to our advantage, because 3% is the max, and as we go on and more and more of these come out, you're probably going to see that 3% drop.
Competition.
Yeah.
I mean, following what Ed's, or Pat's saying, can there be a transfer fee that we put on these folks, something like that? We're looking for revenue sources, and these folks, whoever buys this is buying it because it's making a lot of money, let's face it, it's not because it's a loss leader.
Correct.
I like that idea. I like that idea too. Because I don't think that will negatively, I mean, anybody that's going to sign the host agreement, it's not going to be any charge that they're going to have to accrue, unless their contract involves something to a transfer.
I can find out.
Okay, that's a good, good idea.
I don't know if that's a legal fee or-
Because that already happened in North Hampton.
Right.
Right. It was sold.
Yeah, I'm sure, I don't know what the price was, but I'm sure it was in the multi-million, a million.
I'm sure it was.
Yeah, I, I gotta guess that these small people who open these up are thinking more, going to sell it corporately and make, you know, a loan, do an investment and sell it off.
That is who's buying it.
The big, big companies.
The ones that backed the ballot question in the first place.
Yeah, and the sad thing is, we're thinking it's going to stay small local businesses and all that, but really, they're coming in grabbing them as, you know, national corporations.
Like a franchise almost, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Can I ask a question on the, you know, the 10 or 20, $20,000, whatever it is that we would charge, would go back into the education program, or, or the substance abuse treatment program, what, however, that we would decide to use the money? If it were to go to an education program, it would be likely that it would go to Hampshire Regional, right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
Because you want to stop that at the grade school level too.
Okay, okay, because I'm just thinking, when we're dealing with five towns, and the other towns aren't participating in this, then we end up-
We can say keep the local.
We might contract with urgent care, okay.
Exactly, that was what I was thinking of, a third, independent third-party vendor too.
It's not the same, but we have a DARE program, maybe we could start, whatever you'd call the program.
Integrating it.
Yeah, for the younger kids, because, boy, it starts there, I'm pretty sure.
That's probably, that's probably a good idea, yeah.
Starts with one of the dads.
Sorry?
Starts with mom, dad.
Concern I had was, if this was popular, certainly like the North Hampton, well, they don't expect it to be, because of North Hampton's locations, I think is, brings in a lot of business from where they are, I don't think they've seen the same thing in East Hampton. But I wouldn't want people crossing College Highway and parking across the street, and so I think when they talk about the local impact, I think the police are a big part of that.
They're probably going to be the largest part, I think.
Yeah, right. And it's hard to quantify what role they would play, and how much additional detail there might be because of, for shop opening like that.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the things that Katie from KP Law said, to be very careful of, of your public safety departments, of really keeping a track of, in that first five years of-
Right.
What the expenses, the actual impact expenses may have been, because when that five years is up, and you go to renew, well, right now you've got carte blanche, and everybody's doing 3%, probably in five years, you're probably going to have to negotiate on what the actual impact is, whether that's less or more.
There's no mechanism in this, or in any, could we put it to charge back if we go over the amount?
No, what you can, what you might be able to do from, you know, some of Maureen's comments is, and Ian has asked me about this, is can we put in something in this host agreement that if traffic, or parking, or whatever becomes an issue, or whatever, you know, is there a way to build into this agreement that it's at the police chief's discretion to, you know, come in and assign details, or whatever?
Sort of cost reimbursement, maybe?
Type of thing, right.
It's going to be cost loss, you know, charge.
Well, for charge and detail rates, it's cost loss anyway, because we're getting-
From what I've heard, and I don't know, but you hear it a lot, is, North Hampton's doing so well, because it's right off 91, and a lot of the cars have out of safe plates.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and East Hampton, you'd ever see a crowd there, at least I have never.
Yeah, it's all around the back though, that's why.
Do you know that?
But they were both, I mean, they were both medical facilities, and I think that makes their, you know, attraction to people, because they were already known entities. This is going to be just recreational-
This is just recreational, right.
Which is very different from the other, I don't know about the volume then.
Yeah.
Five years from now, it's going to be so saturated.
Right.
We'll be paying them to stay.
It's possible, and it's, it's actually one thing, I haven't said this before, it's one thing we should keep in the back of our minds, is if this is worth 150, or 200, or 250, or 300,000 dollars in revenues to us, that could drop off, so be very careful when we build the budgets of how that's allocated, you know, should it, should it be allocated, you know, more into, you know, one-time costs, or whatever, or something that you can really identify that if it does drop off, we're not on the hook for, you know, ongoing operational costs.
We should budget for money we don't have.
Right. Yeah, I'm just saying, we should be cautious about this, yeah.
I think John's on point though, he's going to have one of these steep curves.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. But I think it's, you know, might be useful to put in some sort of a transfer, you know.
Like I say, I can find out if it's legal.
But I don't think that we should be trying to, you know, get any more money than certainly East Hampton or North Hampton, because I don't think it's, even after the hearing, I ran into the man that wants to open up the shop, and he made a comment about the $20,000, he said North Hampton, and he knew that North Hampton and East Hampton was only 10,000, and his comment was, and Southampton's so much smaller than either one of them, so I think he's even thinking it's going to be less than 10,000.
Isn't it possible?
Yeah.
Where is this plan to be located?
Right next to McKell's Coffee Shop in Red Rock.
Oh, in that shopping mall?
Yeah, shops along, across the big Y.
But I mean, to that person's comment, I don't think that really matters, if we decide to have a higher one for our own reasons to fund it and everything, I mean, that's fine.
I think so, but I don't want to go to the point of dissuading-
No, you don't want to drive this away either, so.
Yeah, but if you're hoping to negotiate, if you want, if you start at 10, you're going to end up less than 10 probably, so maybe we start at 15 rather than 20, but with the hopes that we could get 10. I wouldn't want to go too low, because I think it's really important to have the educational counseling component.
So right now, they have to apply for the licenses from the state, from the Cannabis Commission.
Right.
And-
Which they couldn't do until they had their, that community outreach meeting, so that was a step in that. And then the local steps are, they have to apply to the planning board for, under the special permit, to go there and site plan review, and then they have to come forward to the select board and negotiate the local host agreement. So those are basically the three paths that they have to follow.
Just the local.
And you run some-
Yeah, he lives in Southampton.
Bolino's Restaurant in Bishop Slouge, in North Hampton.
Oh, okay. So he's, yeah.
Yep. Okay, anything else, John?
I don't have, no, thanks.
Okay, anybody else want to comment about this? So we don't have to do anything about filing on the host agreement really?
No, no, I, I threw it out here real, real quick when I knew it was a joint meeting, because I thought finance might want to hear about, about the possibility of a new revenue source.
But our next steps would be, if we're going to add any sort of a transfer agreement, this, this host agreement came from KP Law.
Correct.
So we would want to go back to them and ask them to include something about that.
Or is it even legal to start with?
Is it legal to do that?
Yeah.
And then the only other decision was the amounts, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's something that would happen before, before we entertain him to come in front of us?
Well, I think we've got our, our template, I think, right, we know where the market is, so, you know, what those final numbers end up being, that's part of the negotiation process, but.
So the other thing they mentioned though, for people who weren't there, is that this whole process can take anywhere from six to 12 months.
Yeah, it's not a quick process. And, and the way the Cannabis Control Commission has been operating, they'd probably lean towards the 12-month side of things.
Now, I know there's all kinds of problems with, I know there's a problem with Westfield, where they're going to have one, and they said, oh, there's a soccer field right there in the runway where the kids play. So there's a daycare in the same parking lot, is that going to be-
That wasn't, that wasn't a barrier to the agreement by the planning board.
Planning boards, okay, okay.
Well, they, they, they pretty much followed the state guidelines, and they didn't alter that. The state guidelines start at, I think it's kindergarten, so basically pre-k and daycare falls below that age group.
For whatever reason, I know that the city of Westfield denied it because there's a soccer field right there, but that's up to them, I guess, I don't know.
And, and, well, that could be part of their local bylaw.
And my understanding is there's a third location in East Hampton being considered behind in that industrial park area, and there's a daycare.
Oh, that's right too, yeah, right off of, I mean.
Quick question, it has to give it that, when they go to the state, and they do sell, I believe that the new party has to reapply to the state, or do they just transfer to them automatically?
No, the new party would have to reapply to the state for license.
That's why, I mean, on our end of it-
We should be trying-
It's not just a transfer, it's a, it's a license.
Yeah.
They can't transfer the license, yeah.
Administrative fee.
Yeah, exactly.
John said a transfer fee.
Transfer fee, that's all.
Yeah.
A question, as you may know, so if we have a host agreement, we negotiated it, we like it and all that stuff, certain dollar amounts in it, and somebody else comes into town, do we have to give them the same host agreement, or are we able to negotiate differently?
Well, I mean, you work off the template, that's the idea of having this template.
But if we say 20,000 for this one, does the next one have to pay 20, or if we say five, does, can we up the next one to 50?
You, you could.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know, so.
And you might, and you might have different little, you know, clauses in there depending on where they're going to-
Figure out where we're going to negotiate, because that is a precedent, we're going to set, you know.
Not only that, like you said, down the road, we might be in a different place, and so now the going rate is, you know, whatever, and then when it's saturated, it might be much less.
Yeah, and you, and you might have a business come in, and I'm just saying this hypothetically, because we're pretty limited to what they, what the bylaw allows it at, but if you had a business that came in and was going into, say, a building that had much less parking, was on a busier intersection, you know, that might play into all of this too, is with, with some of those things and the clauses you put in it, because it would probably have a larger impact on, you know, police services or whatever.
I did, I did ask him that question about parking, and he said he doesn't anticipate anybody ever crossing the highway, that restaurant, you know, they count on an hour and a half to two hours of time in a parking lot, but he doesn't anticipate, you know, any kind of holdup, especially now where there's already other businesses around.
Yeah, and there's always a lot of parking available in that particular parking lot, it seems, so.
Unfortunately.
Well, unfortunately, I think that's one of the advantages, yeah, advantages of, you know, this type of operation looking to go in there though.
He also addressed the issue of using local people, that's part of it. He also talked about security, was a big piece of what he's doing, and he's already looked, contacted a local security vendor to discuss hiring, so. Could be good.
The one thing that was different, I think, was in the East Hampton one, maybe they were going to take the, the benefit payment and give that on to a nonprofit to manage the education or whatever, and I don't think, we haven't said that in ours in particular, we'd collect the fee, but we haven't said about how we might manage that, so I don't So I don't know if that's, we want to be inspired from East Hamptons or anything about that.
Yeah, no, one of the things Maureen was talking about, and it's very possible if we have a third-party vendor, you know, manage that, like urgent care or something, something else, but the.
But you don't want to put it in a agreement because you're stuck with that.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you just might put the wording that kind of generalizes what it's being used for or whatever, yeah.
I think East Hampton is a third-party.
Any other comments about the host agreement? All right. Any other necessary business that can't wait until the July 23 regular select board meeting?
Just got a question. Just follow up what I've seen on Facebook about JP's closing, is it?
I'm sure it's closed, yeah.
Yeah. Restaurant out here? Down here, but down the area, yeah.
Yeah, that was very abrupt.
Yeah, they had things going on Sunday afternoon, they.
I was going to say, I just saw cars there last week, so.
I was just there Friday.
Somebody said Saturday it closed, so you were there Friday?
Friday, there was very few people there.
They still had their music on Sunday. In fact, Lindsay's assistant on Saturday said that they were having a meeting there.
All right, next Friday.
We know for a time and told them.
So I wonder what's going to go there.
Another thing, I just want to say, people were asking questions about that from a town perspective. Did we have a role in any of that?
In what, JP's?
No, I think there were ongoing, in the past, considerations relative to sewer and that sort of thing, but I don't think there was any that gets us surprised to us, it was to everybody else.
It was just economics from what I heard.
Yeah.
It wasn't because we were shutting down, I think.
Oh, okay. All right, well, that, all right.
The only role we'll end up playing is you as a licensing commissioner, board that's had available license.
Now, the liquor license is still being held by the owner of the building, am I correct? They didn't sell it.
No, I don't think so.
He sold it?
He turned that in.
Right, that's why.
He replied for.
That's why they had to let it be open.
Yeah, yeah. So there's a liquor license sitting there.
So there's a liquor license, yeah. Another thing that came up on social media, I was hoping that the police chief Russ is solicitors, you know, there's been breaking and entering around town, and then they're also seeing some people going around soliciting, and they were wondering, and somewhat surprised that, that we did have a, we didn't restrict soliciting in town. I think that was discussed by our board a while ago.
Most communities don't.
Yeah.
No, my.
You're getting into basic rights.
No, not only that, you've got little kids selling, you know, wrapping paper and cookies, and I mean, you don't know, you know.
But my, my, my understanding was that people, solicitors had to register with the, with the police department, except if they were nonprofit. If they were, you know, political, religious, those kinds of things, they were exempt from going to the police department to let them know that they were in town to do X, Y, Z, and they would be canvassing certain areas of the town. That was my understanding of it.
I'll have to look at the bylaws.
But we need to, we need to clarify that.
Sure.
And that would be part of the bylaw discussion, if it isn't there, or we won't make.
Or what is there, if you want to, yeah, tweak it.
What we're going to do about it. That's in consultation with the police.
Yeah, and I think some people seem to think anyway on social media that it had been a bylaw that we didn't allow solicitation, and it got repealed. And if that's the case, I don't know when that might have been, but we need to do a little bit of dig into history on that.
This has come in front of us the last three years, because we talked about what time of night you have to stop and all that. But I don't remember it ever being not allowed.
Yeah, I don't think, I get it, I don't think that's because we couldn't do it though, you know. And the ones that are exempt are probably half the ones you don't want knocking on your door anyways, you know.
Right, right. The only thing for the next agenda, Ed, if we could bring back the discussion about the select board goals.
Oh, sure.
I wanted to have John DeParr about it. So last time, we just all went around and just talked about it, and, you know, what was mentioned is economic development and solar. It had to do with the presentation we had the previous time on the fiber optic plus the sewer. So we just wanted to have an idea of what our priorities are, instead of just sort of being reactionary, what we could, what we could do to either add an ad hoc committee or discuss that. And the other thing is, I had a conversation with Charlie, because, you know, he has moved forward, I don't know if you're aware of it, but in-town hall is an EMD room where they gathered when there was the windstorm, and it's got maps up, and it's great, I mean, it's wonderful.
Town Hall or police station?
I mean, police station.
Old Town Hall.
Old Town Hall. But there's a room for EMD sort of gathering, there are maps, there's some very useful equipment, that sort of thing. But they had gotten a memorandum agreement for restaurants in the event of a large gathering kind of thing, and also for, well, the church, we have one already. But the busing one was, we just signed a contract recently for the busing, and that wasn't.
We'll have to revisit that now, because I think we're probably more likely to get a follow-through on it.
Right. So I'm just wondering, you know, Charlie said, well, maybe, you know, in September, September's probably not a great time for the superintendent and the principal.
I guess might be decent.
Yeah, so I'm wondering if we could add that to the agenda, maybe invite whoever would be involved in that. I think we should have a transportation memorandum of agreement.
Well, and Francine was probably a member too, but at the Hampshire Regional School Committee meeting, when we awarded the bus contract, they were interested in talking to us about it. They weren't interested until we finally signed the contract, but then they said they would be interested in talking to us.
To add these other services, but yeah, the same, the same vendor, yeah.
Oh, they were the only ones.
Is it okay, I'm going to see the school, high school principal tomorrow, is it, is it okay if I bring this up with her?
I think it's, I think it's fine. I think that most likely it would be the superintendent though.
No, I know, but I mean, she, she really is very involved in the, in the operations side of things.
Yeah.
So there's a heads up.
I imagine it would involve some of the emergency management people, but obviously Charlie, he's the one that's moved forward with these memorandum agreements. I think we need to keep moving forward with them.
It wouldn't necessarily involve the schools, I was just using the bus contract, transfer.
Right. And the other thing is, you know, what about, what is our capacity for handicap transportation? I mean, obviously we have the van that, but that would be another consideration, and obviously in an emergency situation, if we had to move a lot of people who had, you know, so it might be good to have John Workman be a part of that conversation too.
And what about with Fritta, you know?
Yeah.
Our COA transporter.
Yeah.
They have accessible vans.
Yeah.
Of course, we should add one thing while we're talking about the fiber optic and the sewer presentation that we had. People, I think, are interested in that, and that didn't go out live that night, if I remember, and it's very hard to catch it. It was a long meeting of like three to four hours. Is there any way that we could isolate or have East Hampton Media isolate out those two presentations and put them up separately on the website? The fiber optic one and the small.
I think that's a good idea.
Because I think people are interested wanting to know about it, but, you know, they're not going to sit and go through all the hours of our select board meeting to find it.
So it was the?
The, what's it called?
Yeah.
Whatever, fiber optic.
Yeah, fiber optics and then the limited sewer.
And what other meeting?
The limited sewer, same, same meeting.
Oh, same, so it's just the one, okay.
Yeah, just put two segments and two events. Can I, can I just, I mean, we're on the topic of East Hampton media. You know, they roll footage all day long, if you happen on there.
That's, yeah.
But you can't read it. You can't read it, the background is.
You mean the scheduling?
You can't read anything.